Welcome to the Candidate Forum put on by the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst. My name is Patty Lackman and I am from the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League's purpose is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens in government. Providing this forum allows citizens to become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. We are happy to provide this service for the community. At this time, I would ask you to please turn off your cell phones and other electronic devices. I just turned mine off because I forgot. I would also ask that you refrain from applauding or in other ways demonstrating support or opposition of a candidate. No campaign literature may be passed out in this room. Feel free to put your campaign bling back on once you leave this room. League of Women Voters of Elmhurst has submitted three questions which were given to the candidates ahead of time, as well as collecting questions from the community via email. And of course, you and the audience can also submit questions. Note cards and pencils have been provided on which to submit your questions. Questions will be screened only for duplication, clarity, and appropriateness for the office being discussed. Please submit questions for all candidates participating in the forum. Please signal a volunteer. Volunteers, can you raise your hands over here? Okay. If, when your question is ready for submission. Also signal if additional note cards are needed. Realize that we may not get to all questions. This particular section of the forum is for those seeking to be District 205 School Board members for a four-year term. All candidates running in the contested race were invited. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. They will each present a one-minute introductory statement. The order has been determined alphabetically. Then questions will be asked and each candidate will have one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements will be continued in alpha rotation and they will also be one minute in length. League of Women Voters of Elmhurst members will keep time. Raise your hand, timers. And candidates will strictly adhere to the time limits. Candidates, please keep an eye on the timers. When you see the stop sign, you may finish your sentence but not go on to another paragraph. So, let's begin. And we will start with candidate Arvenites.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Athena Arvenites. My husband Nick and I have two children who attend Sandberg and we live in the field elementary part of Elmhurst. I spent my 19-year career in education at Newtshire High School where I started as a business ed teacher and spent the last 13 years as an administrator. More specifically, I was the Director of Student Life and an Assistant Principal. I currently work as an educational consultant, helping students and parents navigate the college search and admission process while also offering assistance in high school academic planning to ensure parents that their students engage in educational opportunities that will help them reach their high school, their post-high school goals. I am the current President of the Elmhurst D205 School Board and I'm running for a second term this April. Over the last four years, our district has seen tremendous improvement in a variety of areas. And while that's all great, there is more work to do to ensure our children are provided with an excellent education and opportunities for the betterment of their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bischof, your opening.
My name is John Bischof. I grew up in Elmhurst and went to Jackson, Bryan, and York. Finally moved back with my wife Christine in 2019 and I have three children. One daughter in second grade at Edison and a sixth grader and eighth grader at Sandberg. Ever since I moved back to Elmhurst and even before in our old school district, I have volunteered at school in the PTA, in as a parent reader, in any way, shape, or form that I can. That is what I have done my entire career as a stay-at-home dad and I wish to continue doing that for District 205. I'm here to support our students and be an ally for our teachers. And those are my two main concerns with our Board of Education. And I want to retain our great students and continue on the path that we've had with our strategic plan, increasing our test scores and having our kids emotionally and academically prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brezhnahan, your opening.
Thank you. First, thank you for being here. I appreciate that. My name is Brian Brezhnahan. I am a resident here. My wife and I have four kids, three of them currently in the district, one graduate who is a junior in college, a senior in high school, a freshman in high school, and an eighth grader at Sandberg. And they all went through the Hawthorne Elementary School. During my time here, I've been a coach, PTA Chair, and Chairman of the District 205 Foundation, raising lots of funds to be given back to our students. Professionally, I've been a teacher for 20 years. Most of that was in Language Arts Middle School, getting my Master's in Educational Administration. And most recently, I went back to school to get my CSBO license, which is the Financial Officer of a School District. And I currently serve as the Business Operations Coordinator at a local school district. And I like to bring my experience, my education, and my student-first mindset to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez.
Hi, my name is Tom Chavez. Think most people in the room know, for the last several years have been a very strong advocate, sometimes very outspoken advocate, for improvement in District 205. And the three things that I've always talked about are academic achievement, improving that, transparency from the district, and holding the people in charge of the district and the school board accountable to produce good outcomes for the parents, the students, and the taxpayers of Elmhurst. So I'm here again. I'll continue to do what I've been doing on the school board, off the school board. But I think there are plenty of things that are, that are improving in the district, but there are plenty of things that need to significantly improve, which is, most importantly, are the outcomes for the kids that are graduating from District 205 and entering the workforce or college.
Thank you. Candidate Slawinski, your opening.
Thank you so much for being here today. My name is Nikki Slawinski. My husband and I moved to Elmhurst in 2007. I have two stepchildren who graduated from York, a seventh-grade son at Churchville and a daughter at Emerson. I've always held two beliefs very, very deeply, the importance of education and the importance of giving back to your community. Because of that, I volunteered for years in the Emerson and Churchville PTA and other organizations within our community. I have a Bachelor's in Education. And though I didn't go the route of classroom education, I do hold a full-time role as an Executive Vice President of Talent, Experience, and Development, where I have oversight of talent and performance management, organizational effectiveness, our internship program, early careers, engagement, and more. I'm running for the school board because I wholeheartedly agree with our strategy and our mission of preparing students for college careers and life. And to that end, my priorities are to ensure our students have access to resources they need, that we're making good decisions with the community investments provided to our schools, and that we help to advance excellence within our academics.
Thank you. And now we'll start with our first question. And we'll start with candidate Bischof. Should school board committee meetings be recorded and streamed?
Yeah, I've had a long history of wanting transparency, especially in local government. I feel as if that our meetings should be available to all of those who would like to follow along and see, and hear our, our progress, especially with the strategic plan, with test scores, more recently with the referendum and all of this, all of the buildings that have been improved and rebuilt. People love to hear that. And I feel that a transparent board will have better outcomes with our community and with our kids.
Thank you. Candidate Brezhnahan, same question.
Yes, I think our district does a great job with making our meetings available to the public, online, streaming, and on YouTube for people to watch that can't make it all the time. So I think it's definitely an important part of being a good stalwart to the community, getting in community involvement, and educating the community on what's going on in the district. There are some legalities that we also have to abide by that help us be as transparent as possible. We could always work on other transparencies throughout the district, but in terms of putting our school board meetings on, out there in the public and streaming and having them open to the, our community, I think we've done a great job.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez.
Yeah, I agree. We, I think we need to be as transparent as possible. I think we should actually go back to having two board meetings a month from, we, that was reduced to one. And I think the district should go bend over backwards to be transparent with the community about everything, academic performance, district finances. And I think the best way to do that is to keep things open so people get to see exactly what's going on.
Thank you. Candidate Slawinski.
Thank you. I do agree. I think we should continue to record and make accessible school board meetings. I think it's part of a comprehensive communication plan for our parents and staff and students. I think it also increases accessibility so all can be aware of what's happening. I know as a working parent, it's very, very helpful to me to be able to listen to school board meetings, which I do often, when it's convenient for me if I'm not unable to attend or maybe if it conflicts with an, a PTA meeting for one of the schools that my children belong to. I, again, I think it's part of a comprehensive plan. It's great at increasing transparency and believe that we should continue to do so.
Thank you. Candidate Brezhnahan, along the same lines. How can District 205 improve? Oh, I'm sorry. Candidate, first question and I screwed up. I'm sorry with the person sitting next to me. Candidate Arvenites.
Yes. Thank you. I also agree with the other candidates. Of course, transparency is a top priority for our district. There's a little history here that we can share with those of us who've been around for a while. All school board meetings, of course, have been livestreamed and recorded for future review of anyone who's interested. The pandemic brought on this technology for our committee meetings at the school board level. So committee meetings are smaller, more specific meetings that focus on very specific topics. After the pandemic, we, the board reverted back to not televising or streaming those meetings. I am happy to say that moving forward, starting with our Committee of the Whole in February, all committee meetings will be back online and available for the public to view at a later date. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Question two, along the same line, and that will be for candidate Brezhnahan to start. How can District 205 improve or enhance transparency? How would you improve relations between the board and the community?
To improve relations with the board and community, I think communication has to be improved. Transparency in how decisions are made and being okay with, when the, when the school board has a problem or did, made a mistake, being open and honest about it and coming forth. A great way to improve community discourse is to possibly have those school board meetings at different middle schools so that every neighborhood can be engaged. We have three middle schools throughout the district. We have a very large community that extends from Bryan to Churchville. And I think it would be great to have those communities within the district be active and engaged by coming to those board meetings within their own community. Their smaller community, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez, same question.
Well, the district has, you know, you have to listen carefully to what the district tells you publicly and then what they do when you see like, for example, a District 205 newsletter come out that highlights only certain things that are happening in the district and does its best to minimize or hide other things that are happening in the district. For example, the December newsletter talked about our financial position being stable and strong, when in reality, we were in credit watch, which is the lowest rating that ISB assigns. We also didn't talk at all about senior, the high school test scores dropping 4% instead of going up for 3% like the district told us they would. So, you know, they should, you know, we all understand things happen and people struggle sometimes, but the district has not done a great job at being transparent with parents and taxpayers in Elmhurst. That needs to improve.
Thank you. Candidate Slawinski.
Thank you. I think the, the district has done a nice job of trying to have, again, a comprehensive communication with PTA reports. So often, if you attend your PTA meetings, you get a summary of what's happened at the board meetings, written communication, YouTube, state of the district videos. A lot of these I've become aware of as I've started to run for the board. So I think part of our opportunity is to really increase awareness of all of the resources and communication mechanisms that exist. I do think that we have an opportunity to also be more proactive. I think there's a balance between things that need to be, that we do need to hold close and we can't talk about broadly. And I do think that if we can get in front of people and tell them as much as we can and the reasons behind our decisions, I think that will ultimately help increase and improve relationships with the community. I think focus groups are also a great way to get feedback along, along the way from our community members.
Thank you. Candidate Arvenites.
Thank you. Yes, of course, communication can always be improved. If I look back at the first term, the last four years of being on the Board of Education, I think parents in our community and even community members would agree that there's way more information available and more frequency of contact than there was with parents, students, staff, and community members, maybe four or five years ago. It's always a work in progress. And the, the tough challenge is that, you know, you, if we're going to engage and we want to be involved in, in the details of what is happening, which I encourage everybody to be, all community members, we also have to pay attention to those board meetings that are filmed and live and open for staff or for community members to go to, to see and hear the conversation that's happening. So things like our financial readings would be explained, and they are, have been thoroughly. So of course, always work to do. I'm glad that we've seen improvements in the last four years, hoping to continue that on for the next four years. Thank you.
Candidate Bischof.
Communication is key. I believe that the board has been doing a great job in getting all of their information out to the community, all in one, one or two areas, especially with the, the Parents Square app. We get a lot of stuff from the district and our respective schools. And I think that that has been a benefit for this community. I agree that we need to continue with, with transparency and with communication, just and, and provide our community the opportunity to see us in action, watch us, ask questions, bring up concerns. And I, I actually liked candidate Brezhnahan's idea of having these meetings move from middle school to middle school. I think that that's an excellent idea. I think that our board needs to be more in front of the community so that we're available to answer questions and speak to concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, starting with candidate Chavez. What role, if any, do you believe the school board has in restricting educational materials after they have been approved, approved and implemented by faculty and staff?
Say that again? Can you read that again?
What role, if any, do you believe the school board has in restricting educational materials after they have been approved and implemented by faculty and staff?
Well, that's a great question. I think the school, the school board ultimately is responsible for what happens in the school district, right? So we hire the administrators, we hire the teachers, we review the curriculum that's being proposed by the school district. And when it's not meeting standard, we need to change. And I'll give you a great example. American Street at York, third-grade book for York, for York freshmen at a time when they were challenged to achieve at grade level. No surprise that, A, I had to go to a school board meeting and bring that to the attention. Was roundly criticized for it, but at the end of the day, nobody should be surprised that SAT scores for York's kids this year dropped 4% when we're giving them third-grade books at a freshman level. So those are the things that should be looked at by the school board. And the school board should have a say in whether or not that makes it into core curriculum.
Candidate Slawinski.
As I mentioned, in my professional career, I've been involved in all levels of education with a Bachelor's in Education up through my current job, which I oversee interns, early careers, et cetera. And I think one of the key pieces is making sure that you're using data to inform your decisions. I think the ultimate role of the school board is to hire the superintendent and hold the superintendent to expectations and, and to excellence and monitor that progress. There are people who are experts within the field who should be in charge of curriculum and I think we need to leave the decisions to them, but then hold them accountable to make sure that the, those decisions are getting the, the outcomes that we're looking for. We can do that by monitoring progress, asking for frequent updates, exploring root causes when we see successes so that we can scale things, looking for opportunities, and trying to course correct if we need to. And then making sure that decisions and initiatives are taken from the administration to help continue to move our students toward positive outcomes.
Thank you. Candidate Arvenites.
Can I ask that you read the question one more time? Sorry, it's a complex one, so.
Sorry. What role, if any, do you believe the school board has in restricting educational materials after they have been approved and implemented by faculty and staff?
Okay, so that's an interesting question because the board would have had to approve the curriculum prior to it being implemented by the faculty and staff. And so that, it's just an interesting angle for me. So here's where I'll go with this one. You know, the school board, it's, it's the luxury of being in an elected position is that there's, there's turnover in rotation every two and four years. And so there's this respect for prior school board decisions that comes into play as a current school board member. But then there's also this need for continuous improvement. And so I would say under a continuous improvement model, if there are certain resources or curriculum that are not working, I'm going back to being data-driven and telling us what the impact is on students and their learning, then, you know, there's a need to continuously improve and to look at other resources that might be more effective. So I hope I've answered that question, but it's a challenging question. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bischof.
Once a curriculum has been approved by the board and teachers have submitted what they're looking to teach and they're actively, whether it be a book or a project or anything else, like, once that curriculum has been approved, I don't feel that the board should be telling teachers how to teach. Now, if they're not achieving their goals and not having our, our kids properly educated, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother conversation. If we're not getting the outcomes that we need and that we desire for our children, that is a conversation to be had, especially at the school board level. But for us, after a curriculum has been approved, to stick our fingers and tell teachers who have trained how to teach and how they can or can't talk about certain topics, be them uncomfortable or not, I feel that that's a bit too far. If the data shows that our kids are having good outcomes while learning in, from these teachers, I think that we should be more hands-off.
Thank you. Candidate Brezhnahan.
So the district does, the, the board does approve the curriculum. And I think the first thing that we, we have to be is knowledgeable about that. And as a board member and an educator for 20 years, I am very knowledgeable in developing curriculum. I developed it on my own. I've worked with and collaborated with other, other staff members to develop curriculum. And I think that's a leg up right there, being knowledgeable about it. And to make sure that our research is data-driven, research-based, so that we have the best curriculum out there. We do have to trust in the professionals. So once that's established, I think there is some faith-based trust in having, in the teachers doing what they're doing. They are professionals. They know this in and out, the workings of the district. But we do have to have regular evaluations. We have to collaborate with the staff and administrators. And we also have to have some tough discussions on whether or not it is effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Starting with candidate Slawinski. Excuse me. One role of a school board is to develop policies for the district. Are there existed, existing District 205 policies of which you disapprove? Do you have suggestions for new policies?
I'll start out first by saying often policies and how they're operationalized gets confused. Policies in and of themselves are meant to be fairly broad. They're intended to ensure we meet compliance and legal standards as well as operational efficiencies. I reviewed, I have reviewed several of the policies of the district and am familiar with them. I've looked at curriculum development and content, student code of conduct, community engagement, and homework policy. And I can't say that there's any that I outwardly disagree with right now. I do know that the board has a policy committee that reviews policies on a regular basis to ensure that they meet standards and compliances that are required. I do think, though, we have an opportunity to do better in terms of implementation and communication of policies. One example is when we adopted the new high school curriculum policy and it caused some frustration within the community at how it was implemented and communicated and how the support was there to help. So ultimately, this impacts students' abilities to succeed.
Thank you. Candidate Arvenites.
Thank you. It's okay. Currently, I would say board policies are up to date and reflect the work of our schools. There isn't a policy at this time that I believe needs to be added or removed. And I'm pleased to see there's a continuous cycle of review taking place where the board has an opportunity to modify, add, and remove policies on a quarterly basis. The board's policy work is high-level and lives in the management and operation of the district and gives the authority to the superintendent to carry out the functions of the day-to-day school life. At times, I agree with candidate Slawinski, some become confused in the difference between board policy and classroom or building practices. The board has a policy committee it meets quarterly to review policies and any new school codes requiring change of policy. Recommendations for policy changes come from the board, come to the board from either administration, members of the board themselves, or from the attorneys or the state. It is important to work with the, within the guidelines of the Illinois Association of School Boards so that policies are reflective of school code. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bischof.
I'd like to thank the two candidates before me for kind of going over the difference between policy as the board sees it and approves it and whether I agree or disagree with that. I would say that right now I don't have any policies in particular that I disprove of. But to give you the answer that I think you guys wanted, what are things that I'm, would like to look into as a school board member? My oldest son, just anecdotally real quick, is going to be a freshman next year and he's already worried about summer school because he's been doing Project Lead the Way, loves it and loves those extracurriculars. He plays the violin orchestra and he loves that as an extracurricular. But he's telling me, "Dad, I need two years of language." And I remember growing up in Elmhurst school districts, being able to do industrial tech, home ec, orchestra, and Spanish all at the same time while having a rigorous ELA and mathematics curriculum. So I'd love to be able to see some way where our kids can do all of those things without having to also go to summer school.
Thank you. Candidate Brezhnahan.
So the board's job is to ensure that all policies are aligned with the district's mission and reflect the community's values. And I think they've done a good job at that and are on a positive path to success, but there is room for improvement. We need to not only focus on the policies themselves, but how those policies are implemented, increasing transparency. When making decisions such as recent changes in the York's testing, we need to ensure that there are no unintentional inequities that arise. The board also approves the curriculum as we stated, and I'd like to see us expand our pathways to success. While programs like the Business Incubator are awesome and great, I'd like us to develop some opportunities for students interested in technology, fine arts, or the trades that go beyond the traditional college prep routes. Obviously, with recent news, we need to strengthen our fiscal oversight and be proactively evaluating and improving our financial policies. And my experience as a business coordinator can do that. And finally, I'd like to amplify some student voice and give them some greater student buy-in, learning opportunities, and maybe even have a student rep on our board.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez.
Well, you know, it's good to have policies. I've looked at many of them and challenged some of them. And at the end of the day, when you have policy, it's important that, you know, that not only do you have policy, but the policy is enforced by the administration in the school district, which oftentimes hasn't been the case in the last several years. Terms of like what, you know, it's not that you're disagreeing with curriculum in some cases, it's that certain things are happening in the classroom that, that shouldn't be and there's a policy regarding that and it wasn't being followed. So, you know, what, we have a policy on whether or not a district employee can use their credit, the district credit card to purchase things. That wasn't being followed. And the only way that came to light was somebody in the public brought it to light. So, yeah, we need, we need to have in policies, but more importantly, policies that we already have on the books need to be enforced by the district administration and by the school board.
Thank you. Starting with, this question will be starting with candidate Arvenites. Diversity, equity, and inclusion programs are being dismantled in many large Diversity, equity, and inclusion programs are being dismantled in many large U.S. corporations. Do you support or oppose the district's DEI policy?
That's a really good question. What I support is creating an inclusive, warm, welcoming environment where all students feel seen, are welcomed, are able to engage in a healthy and positive manner in their education, are able to experience everything that a comprehensive school district like D-205 has to offer without any sort of barriers between them and their access to whatever it is that they'd like to engage in. You know, the, so for me, the response is really about kids, and all kids have the right to opportunity and to be included, warm, and invited into a warm and welcome and safe school environment. It's the only way they're all going to eventually be successful in their later life. Thank you.
Candidate Bischof.
Yeah, I would have to agree. When it comes to our kids, I'm all about diversity and inclusion. These are things that you're going, whether, regardless of what is happening at a federal level right now, people are going to experience different cultures, experiences, and different individuals out there. And we should have an opportu, or we should have in this school district, an educational area where children are made aware of all of these different cultures, races, religions. It's education. We should be educating our kids about all of these different people that they will have to interact with, work with, and coexist with. To think that because someone says that a program should no longer exist, then all of a sudden we lose that for our kids, I would absolutely disagree with that, and I don't think that that's going to happen in Elmhurst.
Candidate Breznerhan.
As a teacher, I've had a student-first mindset, like I mentioned, and I think we need to educate the whole child, and I think we need to educate every child. We need to use the language that is proper, and diversity, equity, and inclusion is an excellent path for our students. Like, as men, as mentioned, we need to create a welcoming, safe place for the students to learn and grow and create these pathways to success. In the hierarchy of needs, safety is number one, and we need to create a district and schools that are welcoming and safe for our students. We also need to help educate the public on what that means and have those tough discussions on what equity really looks like, what it means in terms of changes, and what might happen in our schools. And we have to just have those tough conversations so that we can create the best, safest paths to success for our students.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez.
So I, I believe that race should not be used as a, you know, we talk about welcoming, inclusive environment. My kids are Hispanic, right? They, all of them went through District 205. I've always asked my kids, "How did people treat you? How did people treat you based on your skin color?" And they never had a problem. So, you know, DEI programs, they sound like their, their intentions are good, but I think when you look at, you know, there should be one code of conduct in the district, you know? We are welcoming and inclusive. I've never felt unwelcome and inclusive at Elmhurst, and none of my kids have. But it's the application of a DEI program where you're using race as the judge of how we should treat certain people. I think that needs to go, and I'm glad that it is.
Candidates Slawinski.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I actually, in my executive vice president role, have had responsibility for inclusion within Publicis Group, Digital Experience Group. I think the gold standard is when it's truly integrated into every policy and experience that a child will feel when they're in our district. Unfortunately, we're not fully there yet, and I think there's a lot of places that we're not fully there yet. I agree with what many have said before. Ultimately, the most important thing is that every single child feels that they are in a safe and welcoming school environment so that they can truly learn. And often, dismantling of DEI impacts our most vulnerable populations, which truly impacts our entire schools. And last but not least, our mission of helping our students become college, career, and life-ready cannot help, cannot happen without some sort of focus on inclusion because the real world is becoming more and more diverse. And so I think while we don't need to necessarily have a focus just on DEI, I think it's truly important to have it integrated within everything we do.
Thank you. Following sort of the same tack, starting with candidate Bischof, what is your stance on teaching critical race theory?
I was of the understanding that that is more of a law school topic, not something that's really actually being taught at any of our schools. I, I think it's sort of, it seems to be more of like a false flag that people claim critical race theory is being taught or abused in some way, shape, or form, when they don't like the topic that's being taught. And if we allow our teachers to teach actual history and what truly has gone on in our country, and what we need to do to be better stewards of a great nation like this, I don't feel as if that is something that is an issue or a problem for high school, middle school, and elementary school kids.
Thank you. Candidate Breznerhan.
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and back up, John, on that, that critical race theory is not necessarily a curriculum that we have in our high school districts. But I think it speaks on the last question about diversity, equity, and inclusion as well. We have to, representation is a big part of students feeling welcome in their, in their classrooms and being able to learn. And I think we need to share the history and give examples, positive examples of what our wonderful nation has done and those people that have made it happen, being open and honest to things that, the horrors that we have suffered as well in our nation, and growing together to make improvements and do better in the future. So I think it's not, we shouldn't shy away from it, and we should make sure, again, that every, every student feels included with our, with our curriculum.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez.
So obviously, I've been pretty critical of what's been taught in the school, but FYI, critical race theory, if you go and look at the, the state of, Illinois State Board of Education website, was a topic and was put together, and curriculum for teaching critical race theory was being pushed from the Illinois State Board of Education into school districts, right? And yes, there isn't a course topic called Critical Race Theory. It is how things are being taught, what books, if you look at curriculum, and things that are being taught to children that aren't necessarily a book called Critical Race Theory, but the curriculum is focused on race. And sometimes, you know, we all understand history. Everybody, our kids should learn about the history of our country, but the way critical race theory is taught, it's divisive, and it's not helping kids feel more welcome. It's actually dividing kids, and it needs to be gone.
Candidates Slawinski.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I think critical race theory is highly misunderstood and has become very politicized, unfortunately. I think it's very important that we teach history as it has actually occurred, as history is key for us to learn from, to ensure that we can continue to improve, advance, and avoid making the same mistakes over again. I think, again, those are very, very important factors when we're talking about preparing our students for college, career, and life.
Thank you. Candidate Arvinides.
So a lot of what has been said is where I am also, critical race theory is not being taught in our schools here at D-205. And as an educator for the last 19 years, well, minus the last two, but I haven't seen anything come from the State Board of Education that mandates any teaching of critical race theory in the state of Illinois. Aside from that, I do believe that we, with, with what Brian and Nikki had, and John, had stated around curriculum and teaching history in its true form, and being able to understand and expose all students to multiple perspectives of experience is what is ultimately most important, so that every child sees themselves within the curriculum and sees maybe their family story within the curriculum, not just one more narrow story that maybe had been taught for a very long time. So I'm all about multiple perspectives, learning and growing and understanding others, especially those who are different from us or have a different experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Breznerhan. How do you feel about the amount of homework students receive, as well as the amount of screen-based learning in District 205?
So homework is always a topic as a teacher and a parent, and the way you have to look at it is really data-driven. Does the homework benefit the student? Does it create more learning opportunities? Does it improve their education? And we could see that sometimes it does, especially in the higher grades, and sometimes it doesn't, like in lower grades. Homework has to be looked at in terms of what's the purpose? Is it just regurgitating information that you've learned, or is it creating new opportunities of learning and strengthening the basic skills? So that's first. So taking a deeper dive into that and how it impacts our students in D-205 is necessary. I think, I have not had experiences in District 205 where homework is too much or too little. I think it's kind of gives students the ample opportunities to not just be, do their education, but also participate in after-school events. As far as screen time, I think that's definitely something that we need to look into and maybe decrease.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez.
First, I want to set the record straight. Critical race theory actually has been pushed in District 205, namely...
Answer the question.
Hold on. Namely, namely...
Excuse me, Mr. Chavez.
Hold on.
This is not a time for a debate.
Okay, I'm not debating.
A time for the question.
Okay.
How do you feel about the amount of homework students receive, as well as the amount of screen-based learning in District 205?
So there is clearly an issue with the amount of homework that was being, or actually not being given to students in District 205, and that's what was affecting the outcomes, right? So, you know, there was a, it was the district policy to not give homework, to not give finals, to not give tests, and the outcome suffered, right? So that was just a bad policy. So in terms of like, you know, what needs to change? I think it already is changing, but it should have never happened in the first place. I had a student that went through the last two years of District 205 at the very end of that, and you could definitely see that there was, you know, kids in the district that are achieving better outcomes are the ones that can afford tutors, right? And there were a lot of parents in District 205 that are having to supplement what the district isn't providing their students by paying for expensive tutors. So there should have never been a policy that took finals, homework, and basically accountability out of, away from teachers and students because the outcomes that we're seeing now are as a result of that.
Thank you. Candidates Slawinski.
As I mentioned before, the homework policy is one of the ones I did review before coming to this forum, and I think the policy in and of itself makes sense. I think it really comes down to what Brian had mentioned, is what's the purpose of the homework? So I think that's really important to think about, what the purpose of the homework is. Is it causing additional inequities? Sometimes those who have help at home are able to get homework done, where those who don't are unable to, and it causes additional inequities and within results. I think it's a balance. I've seen it sway both ways in how it's operationalized, so I think it's really important to focus on the why versus how much. In terms of screen time, I do think, again, I am going to sound like a broken record, but I think it's a balance. The reality is, every day in my job, I'm using screens. That's my main mode of communication in terms of when I'm communicating with people internationally or globally. So I think it's a balance. I think there's a time and a place for screens. I think there's a time and a place for human-to-human interaction and education and instruction without screens.
Thank you. Candidate Arvinides.
I would be repeating what both Brian and Nikki have already shared around, you know, homework and the why. I like the way you phrase that, Nikki, the why are we giving homework? But really, ultimately, it's about the value. So education has changed significantly. I see a lot of educators in the audience today. We all know that education has changed significantly, and with that, homework has also evolved. So homework as a reinforcement activity, as I didn't get something, you know, done in class I need to finish, as a long-term project, yes, those are all effective uses of homework. You know, homework just for the sake of homework probably doesn't work with our society today. Our kids are very busy, their families are very busy, and we're trying to mold children who learn how to balance time manage and balance their time with their families and friends. It speaks to now my screen time spiel of, you know, in schools, I think the most important thing for adolescent development and child development is the interpersonal connectivity and relationships that they build with their peers. And so in school, I'd love to see less use of, of computers and, you know, apps to supplement education. I'd love to see more connectivity because our kids are tied to it after school quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bischof.
Yeah, as far as homework goes, my oldest kids are still in middle school, and so the homework that I see coming home is very few and far between, but my kids have excellent scores and excellent grades. So is it working? It seem, for my kids, it seems to be. And other kids who might need extra help, extra practice, I, teachers are providing things for them to do in addition. It might not actually count against them if they don't do it, but it might help them to do better in class. And I see that teachers, especially in the elementary school, it's like, hey, there's no homework, but here's some homework in case your kid needs it. And I really like that. And once we get to high school, I'll see. I hope that the homework level is appropriate and manageable and still allows my children, our children, to have excellent outcomes for college readiness or career readiness. As far as screen time, I agree. The person-to-person contact seems to have been minimized, and I would like to see more of that and less screen time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., our candidate Chavez, we'll start with you. What is your opinion of the district's current financial situation?
Well, the district, as of recently, has been on, two years on, well, we were on credit watch most recently, but, but we were one notch above that last year. Now, Athena says we've improved? Okay. So, but, but last year, they told us that we would improve, and we actually did improve. We, when the, when the State of Illinois came out with its rating, we actually dropped to the lowest level. So that put District 205 in a position of, you know, other school districts in the state, most of whom are in low-income communities. But at the end of the day, you know, there should be transparency around how our money's spent. Most projects that the district, the referendum spent money on projects all went over budget, right? And that was based on, you know, enrollment going up. Enrollment in District 205 has actually dropped 5% since 2019. So we just need to be more accountable and let everybody know, you know, we need more transparency on how money's being spent by the district.
Thank you. Candidates Slawinski, what is your opinion of the district's current financial situation?
So I've tried to dig into this a little bit more since running for the school board, just so I can fully understand, and luckily, several have been very open at helping me understand this further. I do know that we're a self-funded model. We get very little from the state because of how much we get from our property taxes. So it's something that we have to consider. I also know that our fund balance, we keep between 15% to 20%, maybe a little bit more in reserves, and that has helped us when we've come in contact with emergency situations or perhaps if there's large building repairs. I think those are all new things over the last several years, and I think that's a really good thing. I think right now, the, the district and the, the school board has been very mindful around our spend. We've made really good use of the taxpayers' dollars in terms of the referendum. So I think overall, we're in a good state, always opportunities for improvement, but I think overall, our school is in a good financial state.
Thank you. Candidate Arvinides.
Our school district is in a good financial state. I want to add clarity around why the rating dropped two consecutive years. In 2020, the board, it was recommended to the board that they change their accounting method and how they were reporting our finances to the state board, sorry, to Illinois State Board of Education. In doing that in 2020, that decision had an unintended consequence. We were deferring the June drop tax payment to July, and the state uses the June 30th fund balance as the number to qualify how well your school district is doing financially. Well, when we deferred millions of dollars into July, that fund balance looked lower, and there you go with lower ratings. But today, the board, I am happy to say, has made the decision last year to change back to the old accounting method where we are reporting in a way that does not have a negative impact on our ratings. So our finances are strong, and we are very fortunate to be in a community that pays their property taxes, that supports our schools, and wants what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bischof.
Yeah, I don't have very much to say on this. I went through and looked at our school board, our balances and our practices, and yeah, save for an accounting, change in accounting, we're not on a credit watch. We are in a good state, and we have... We are in a good state, and we have, I believe, good stewards trying to keep this board, keep this, our district, 205, with a reserve and able to do all the projects necessary to provide our children with a great education.
Thank you. Candidate Breznerhan.
Sure. Well, recently, obviously, there needs to be a little more transparency with how the district uses their money and collects it with the tax basis, as Athena was talking about. But currently, we're at 110% adequacy, which is very good shape. As Nikki mentioned, we have a robust fund balance that will hopefully be there in case of rainy days and whenever we need to use it. Our referendum went through, and actually, with the district's decisions have cost less than they originally said it was going to do on the taxpayer, so we're doing a good job relieving the taxpayer's burden. But the big thing is to foster trust in the community around our finances, and I think that's a, a big issue that we need to be better at communicating. We need to always stay on top and evaluate our fiscal responsibilities, and we need to, to foster trust with our community.
Thank you. I'm getting the, it's time to cut it off from the-
From who? I'm not getting-
From the league. So, I will ask for you to then start your closing statements, and we are going to go with candidate Lewinsky first.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for making the time to be here today and become more informed voters. My family has overwhelmingly had a positive experience in our schools and this community. We truly love this community. I also wholeheartedly, as I said before, believe in our strategic plan and our mission of ensuring that we prepare students for college, career, and life. In addition to my longstanding involvement supporting our schools, students, and community, my career has given me years of experience at how to effectively listen to the needs of large populations, often with differing opinions, negotiation, negotiating, dealing with all kinds of personnel issues, respectfully challenging others and developing teams in service of achieving shared goals, as well as assessing, improving, and holding others accountable for performance. I believe that these are all unique skill sets that I can bring to the board to help us carry out our district's strategic plan. Again, thank you so much for having me today and for spending your time with us.
Thank you. Candidate Arvinides.
Thank you. In the last four years, our district has gone through a tremendous amount of change, all in the name of meeting the high expectations this community has for their children's education and to become a student-centered organization. A vote for me is a vote to continue on this trajectory of success, fiscal responsibility, and putting students first. More specifically, student growth and proficiency in grades nine through 12 will continue to be a top priority for me as a former high school administrator in a high-performing school district and current member of the Elmhurst Board of Education. Thank you for your time today and for being here, demonstrating the importance of civic engagement in our community.
Thank you. Candidate Bischof.
I'd like to thank everyone here for attending, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, voters, for holding this forum for us. What a great way to get out and actually have some people learn a little bit about you and what, what you're about. And what I'm about is volunteering. I've, that's what I do. That's what I have done for my children and for the children at large in the different districts, areas that I volunteer. And I would like to continue that with the board. I don't have an ego about this. Everything that I want to do is for the betterment of our students, to retain our teachers, and to make sure that we have the transparency and fiscal responsibility that we need as a board at such a high-level, you know, district. We need, we need to have, we need to be one of the premier districts in the western suburbs in Illinois, and I want to continue that. I want our scores to go up. I want our children to be educated in a classical way so that they have more experience and better prepared for college or career. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Breznerhan.
Yes, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out. I do appreciate it. And I would like to thank the people up here. It's not that easy to come up and speak on some of these topics, so thank you all. I think I'd love to represent you guys on the school board for District 205 and, and use my experience and my knowledge to use data-driven curriculum to improve test scores, to collaborate with parents, to partner up with our most important resource, which is our teachers of District 205. Some of the great ones are here today. I'd like to make sure that we are a board that really shows our students that we care. I want to ensure that every student has access to a pathway to success and that they have a trusted staff member that is cheering them on to succeed, and I like to do that as your school board, coming up in April 1st.
Thank you. Candidate Chavez, your closing statement, please.
Well, I believe outcomes matter, and, you know, what we haven't been seeing are good outcomes, strong outcomes for the finished product from District 205. We're spending about $19,000 per student, and when we have half of our York graduating class below proficiency, they're not prepared for college or career, and we need to improve that. So, the way we do that is with better curriculum and holding people accountable. I think transparency is, is a hallmark, and it really needs to be focused on. And I'll say again, you know, in this district, we need to focus on academics and, you know, transparency around things like critical race theory. The district spent $50,000 on core when deep equity. That is critical race theory. Athena should know that that's part of the district curriculum. That was imposed on every teacher in District 205, and the district paid for that. So, we need to be transparent with parents and the community and say, yes, we are teaching core ideas of critical race theory in our district, okay? So, those are the things that parents like me shouldn't have to flush out and make public. They should be transparent about it. So, it's, at the end of the day, it's about improvement for every student, black, white, whoever. We want good outcomes.
Thank you. For more information, please visit the nonpartisan voter guide, theillinoisvoterguide.org in March, the candidates' websites, as well as the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst YouTube channel or on their website. Your participation as a candidate and as a voter is essential to preserving the democracy, democracy we hold, we hold dear, sorry. Please remember to vote on or before April 4th, April 4th, April 1st, sorry. Okay, there's a typo in here. First. You can vote early, and we always encourage people to vote early.
March 17th.
Thank you very much, and let's give a round of applause for our-